I said I'll call you.
We can do it.
Our six o'clock hour we'll call our meeting in order and get a council one to give our invocation.
I wanted to thank the Lord for allowing me to assemble at the other den. Father, I thank the Lord for life, health, and strength. Father, at this time of so long that you still lean your hand to those that are sick and not for lack of this. Yeah, this is too constant now, but they are on the way back and they are fit strong. Thank you, Lord, to bless them and give them strength. Father, in the name of the Son and Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Would you help Mr. Odom and Ms. Plato's family, the prayers get there and answer which they were sent today? So, you might say, oh, we thank everybody for that. Absolutely. So, first, we got approval of agenda items. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Just a moment.
Mr. Woods, Mr. Midgley, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right, it's unanimous. All right. And next is approval of minutes, January tenth, two thousand seventeen.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to review the notes I was given.
Dr. Prince.
Okay. What page? The okay? Five, four, three, fourteen. Five, three, six.
So, we have motion with those corrections by Dr. Prince and second by Mr. Blackman. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, it's unanimous. All right. We have no old business, up new business. Ordinance number seven fifty-two says, ordinance amending ordinance number four thirty-eight A, which amended ordinance four thirty-eight regarding the method of disposing of surplus personal property, first reading, Mr. Mullin.
Yeah, we had to ask the council to amend the surplus property ordinance to allow for the entire law for the ten ago. When we started looking at it, we found, or just funding found, that we had amended several times, so we had part A, part B, part C. So, what we'd rather do is go in and make sure we have a good policy altogether, good ordinance altogether, which requires we don't have a final version yet, but we'd like to ask you all start with any of it, and it would be a all encompassing surplus ordinance. The thing we have now wasn't to do that.
Okay. All right. With that, do we have a motion for ordinance seven fifty-two?
Motion.
Second. Mr. Midgley, Mr. Galadon, all in favor, raise your right hand. It is unanimous. All right, thank you. B is review and approval of shared service agreement with the city of Bennettsville for use of the Marlboro County Animal Shelter. Mr. Mullin.
Mr. Chairman, we have presented, I've presented, potential costs for having the city, city that still stray dogs, dogs that bring it into our shelter. And I mean, we, I would come up with, and Josh can, will come up with the cost, like, for example, the inoculation when they come in, or the day-to-day feeding, also provision for the overhead, meaning the part we pay no matter what for our bill and our staff. And I gave you a sample that, if my understanding is, they had a work session where it's right, where it discussed about, from what I've heard, not an issue, they have a regular weekly. So, I guess, but I would ask at this time is, if council's agreement of just passing the cost along with them, and then entering a simple, minimal, random understanding of, you know, you will pay us on a monthly basis for the dogs we bring in, and you will provide a policy we have in place for our shelter. It's just that simple. And then when we get the budget time, if a council wants to roll that into the budget topic, we have another opportunity to discuss it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mullin. With that, we have a motion. It's his recommendation. Mr. Woods, second. Mr. Midgley, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right, it is unanimous. Item C, discussion of N E T C Marlboro County Vocational Training Facility. Mr. Mullin.
Mr. Chairman, as we had discussed in the work session, N E T C, what is your protective college, which should establish a vocational education program for our county? Last week, they made a decision not to pursue an industrial training program at the Porter Eastside Hospital. That decision was made, my understanding is, kind of facility really set up for an industrial training facility, you know, for gymnasium, that sort of thing. But N E T C had, had, had decided not to do that. And so, they wanted to create a program here in county that has both the industrial training, like if you have the industry or existing industry with specific needs, and also a vocational education program like we had in the hospital years past and all that. So, they had identified and approached us about the Dixieville County. And I could have gone back and forth with staff, President Wagner and myself, and the chairmen of each board, that we came up with some terms or some provisions to do this. And, you know, the council, especially with the legal matter. But what's come out of that is, the county does also the Dixieville, and it's valued at one point four million dollars. County bought it with grant money in twenty-ten, and the N E T C right now has a budget of about one point four million dollars. So, the council would be, you know, put an equal amount into the project. And if part of this whole shuffling of N E T C services here, they would eventually vacate their factory downtown, move that stuff to the Dixieville. So, what they offered up is that they also hold titles of the library, using the way it was funded when the library was constructed, they received a grant through the E D A, and they would give co-owned titles to the county for that. County has a twenty-year operating grant right now for the library. So, in effect, all in all, they would also offer up the N E T C classroom building to the county, which we could use for recreation programs or anything. And then there are other details that I have to be worked out, but then discuss to be sure that, that the Dixieville was used for the purpose it did and the provisions for it to come back to the county if it were a problem, that sort of thing. So, what, after the discussions we've had, what I would be recommending is that, or what I would be requesting the council is permission to move forward and put together all the necessary legal documents and ordinances with councils, with attorneys of input to make this happen. I think it's a good thing for the county, and it's a good thing for county council to take the ability to put the good use here in the county.
All right. Thank you. Any questions from Mr. Mullin, or go ahead and guess? No, here none. All righty.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend the administrator to put together a very comprehensive document that provides all of the resources that are necessary and the measures to protect the county's interest in this facility, and that it does have great benefits in the future for the county and its citizens. So, based on that, Mr. Chairman, I move that the administrator be authorized to proceed with the presentation and the preparation of legal documents, ordinances, or other actions pursuant to the details of the project as presented and agreed to by county councils during our work session. Excuse me, the written outline of the details could be included and attached to this motion and recorded in the minutes. And it's my understanding that, Lord, to move forward, there will be three.
If transferred properly, county property requires three big hand loads here. It's easy to buy as far as itself, if you consider.
All right. All right. We had a motion by Dr. Prince. We have a second. Or Mr. Midgley, a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right. It is unanimous. So, we, we thank for that. You know, it's a good thing that we can move forward, and council wants to know that we are looking forward to moving Marlboro County forward in a positive manner, which is one way that we, we want to do it. So, we're thankful for that. Thankful, as Dr. Prince said, the administrator for all the hard work in there. Up next, we have appointments to boards and commissions. Do we have any appointments to boards and commissions?
Yes, Chairman, I have two appointments to make.
All right, sir.
I think we're doing two separate motions. I'd like to make a motion that John Rogers field the historical preservation commission spot.
All righty. Can we do each individual, or can we do them both?
You can do a vote.
Do them both together, okay.
Okay. And then I'd also like to make a motion to appoint Bill Jennings to the partnership.
All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Could you, or, or ask, ask council to consider nominating Rhonda Odom for the recreation person, since he's not here, and you can make that transition.
Okay. Was there any more? All right. So, what takes, that is a motion from Mr. Mullin and from Mr. Odom? From, it's a request from Mr. Odom sent in, so, you know, and so, if, do we need to make it formal for somebody else, or is it fine for that to come as a request?
I want to make that motion.
Okay. So.
I want to put it in my motion.
Okay.
I'll second your motion.
All right. That's second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, it is unanimous. All right. And there is some more boards and commissions that we do want to make sure that we get filled, and I think our staff is going to look at it and try to find out who's, if they're able to, to meet the needs of what we need them to, and, you know, some of them are no longer with us, and so, we want to just make sure that those are filled and still continue to serve in there. So, we'll try to have that for our next meeting, to make sure we can get them all done. Some of them are very important, so, we've been talking about it and talking about it, but I think we're going to try to at least contact some of them and make sure that we can do something at our next meeting, so we can clean up some of the things that we had. All right. Up next, financial department report.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, for the month of January, expenditure grew at fifty-seven percent of the budgeted amount. This is still slightly under budget for this end of the year. Revenues have increased thirteen percent from last month. Tax collections have been coming in, and revenue collections are actually three percent higher than right now, and a little over this same month last year. The finance department, along with Mr. Mullin, is continuing to be working on creating some new reports to aid in the medical spending for budget purposes, as well as to give to lack of a, the children, and to also a, of the, of the, of the. Bills were introduced in the House, and spent last year to significantly increase the employer contribution rate in the state retirement system. For the South Carolina and the police officer retirement, employer contribution rates would increase two percent for fiscal year eighteen, and then would increase one percent every fiscal year until two thousand twenty-three. This would be a seven percent total increase in six years for the employer rates, which is excellent, which is, and, and, um, the bills would also increase in how South Carolina retirement system police contribution rates at nine percent, and police officer retirement rates at nine point seven five percent, which is much less of an increase for our police. Any questions?
Any questions? All right. Thank you, Ms. Mullin. Up next, Mr. Mullin.
Chairman, we thought it'd be pretty brutal to let that down. We always do, our employees' service anniversaries are following, these are people that have been here one to five years. Steve Blackman, ten years, Tim Brown, thirty-two years, Cheryl Dunst, sixteen years, Willie Glad, eight years, Red Knight, twelve years, Sheriff Lemon, twelve years, Ron Martin, twenty-four years, Grover, twenty-fourteen years, Ron Hunter, eight years, Cory Blake, eighteen years, Eddie Crew, eight years, Melissa Skipper, twenty-two years, Jason Stine, six years, Cindy Wallace, forty-two years, Anthony Wood, ten years. We have a couple of upcoming events we'll see on there, the Association County Mini Year Conference, February fifteenth, they're having classes on Thursday to six. There's a NACO legislative conference, the end of February through March, please let us know if you're interested in that, it's in Washington. Just a reminder that the twenty-seventeen state economic interest, interest report is due March thirtieth, and that's all elected people and some appointed people have to do that. There's a hundred dollar late penalty if you don't meet your deadline. Couple of department updates, animal shelter, you can see, had a busy month, it took in ninety-nine dogs, had eighty-five rescued, two were replaced by the owner, and they had a, they had a population of fifty-eight at the end of the month. Twenty-two cats, ten in, and thirty-five rescued, nine adopted, three euthanized, leaving twenty-nine cats and children. Grover Queen and Keith William attended the South Carolina County Corporate Compensation Trust meeting, she basically was mismanaged in type of, in twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, and won second place in recognition of prompt recording of comp claims by our employee. But that's good enough. You know, Grover's always after everyone, or support their injuries, or any kind of problem, for the time they matter, so we can deal with it appropriately. Economic development-wise, we've had some interesting information you may enjoy, is we've been part of the Tri-City Park in Dillon, that started in the late nineties, and Harbor Freight, who did that. And somebody made a breakdown of the employees there by the county. And, of course, Dillon had three hundred sixty-seven, but we were second with a hundred and nine employees working Harbor Freight. Then you had Marion at sixty-eight, and Clark at sixty-one. And we've even heard from Harbor Freight that they wish they had some sort of transportation for employees to get there, because Harbor County employees are some of the best they have, and often have transportation issues. That's something to think about. Over the past month, as far as prospect activity coming in, I continue to work with Project Custom. We took this as a startup company, so there's more to do than normal, expanding industry. Also had three inquiries in the last month, and one site visit from Prospect. I've been spending a good bit of time trying to evaluate the buildings and sites we have to offer, to make sure that we're not pushing something out there that's really not a good product to sell to people. We do have one new listing, and that's the Ballard Site Plaza. We hate that Ballard closed, but the good news is they've retained a nationally known realtor, Vince Wanger, and we're working with Commerce to get that up on all websites, and I'm going to tour it and all that. It's a hundred and twenty-five thousand square foot building, it's very high, it's very modern, and it's what I would call heavy industrial, it's not just warehouse, it's real deal industrial, and it's going to be close to the, in the port of Dillon, so. As far as, as far as the administrator, we did, Shirley Dunst is announced her retirement for the tax collector, so I'm working to, to find a qualified individual to fill that spot. He worked with Ms. Dunst, she's, it's the third mark, so she gave us time, and we could work together to have a swift transition, and also be utilizing some delinquent tax collectors from other counties, to make sure somebody else has figured out a better way to do some of these things. They all go by the law, some of them can't change that, but there are always better forms of things on that. I thought you might be interested to know, we had sixty-four woods or brush or grass fires in the county in about thirty days. They gave me one of these little papers, like the fireman carry, it sits on my desk over there, it's just constant, I mean, they, they work the fire, on your fireman's desk and these things, and it seemed like a lot of our here today, so people have a sort of way of working, but I don't take care of it. We've also continued to see benefits from the ISO plan you guys approved, some of yours back, as far as how we make improvements to the fire service, with some specific examples of drastic insurance premium reductions. We'll try to bring you a better update on that here the next month, so we want to make sure people know that those improvements have happened, and also, you know, make sure their insurance company knows it as well. County buildings, as I told you guys, are, there are a lot of very pressing needs with county buildings as far as maintenance and repair, and we've been working, a lot of, almost everybody in staff's working to come up with a list, and prioritizing the NACO, Midgley and I were trying to find some money to do it, but we have needs that will cost us much more later if we don't take care of them now. Building security, the administration building, you know, over here, one of the few public buildings in the county, you can walk right in, walk in, hall, somebody's office, so we're going to make some changes there, to have a door, limited access, and some things there. At this day and time, you know, just have to do this with them. I told you all last, long, being long rapport last month, because I'm real big on employee, but employees are, you know, the last month, we've had staff meetings, we've had one-on-one meetings with department heads, we've had small groups getting together to try to solve problems we have, and I want everyone in the organization to have a voice, and everyone has ideas, so we're trying to take advantage of that. And I think it's been a very good season. Also, I've never been, almost all the, all the elected officials, and I've even had a group meeting with courthouse elected officials, you know, they all turn to treasure and court, and, and, or, or they judge, and I think it went very well, and they liked it, and we decided to have a meeting here so often, and just get together, share ideas of the problem. I think frequent communication makes things better when you have a problem. That's all I have. Is there any questions, Mr. Chairman?
All right. Any questions from Mr. Mullin? All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Up next, recognition of citizens' requests, we have one, Ms. Vicky Harris.
Good to be here, Lord, thank you for continuing to stand for you. I just wanted to kind of give you an update of what the Bennett and Harris office was doing. I put in your packet, so I made sure that you were able to get this from the council, a little brief breakdown of what we've done over the past six months. It's a semi-annual report that is due to South Carolina Division of Bennett and Harris, to let you basically know exactly who we've served and how we've served them over the past six months, from July of twenty-sixteen until December twenty-sixteen. We actually processed five hundred and thirty claims through our Bennett and Harris office. We were able to see actually a thousand and fifty-eight people over that time period, for them walking into the office through a point, to get those claims processed or to answer questions. There were two pre-tuition claims processed, twenty-five special inquiries, which would actually be education or other things of that nature. I also attached a breakdown of what those special inquiries were. We had education and training, which was for myself and Amber to go to different training sessions, and it was three of those, and other items that we attended are processed for four hundred and seventy-five. So, you can see from that, that we're not just sitting over there looking good for the county, but we're actually working very hard. We are extremely proud to have Amber on board, helping us, who has fallen into the position very well. She's not a veteran, but she takes her job very seriously, and she takes her heart, every veteran that we serve in this county. I've watched her sometimes, the tears fall from her eyes when one of our veterans have passed, and they were one of the ones that came in and while was checking on us, I mean, we're trying to help them, they come to check on us, and we really appreciate that. There are different things that we've done the past six months, like the Fatale Memorial Day, we had that other evening, the dinner dance, and we do plan on doing more of these things, and we're hopeful that you will attend and show the veterans that, you know, you are involved in what they're doing. That evening, the dinner dance, you could not have been there. Colonel White spoke very well, and at the end of the evening, he took the microphone from the van and began to sing, and it was just something that you had to witness. He is an awesome man, and I hope that you guys will welcome him in. He's kind of new to our county, but his wife is from here, so he's an awesome person, always there for, helpful also for us, too. The parade was a huge success, and you know that our way. I just wanted to make sure that you saw the actual efforts that were put into that office, so that you know we are definitely trying to make sure that Marlboro County is better. Every dime that comes back through claims process and awarded, comes back into this county. They're spending their money, they're buying homes, they're buying cars, and they're doing something in the community. So, I want to make sure that you know what we do is very important, important and essential to Marlboro. Thank you for the time and space.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. All right. That was the only one. Council members, Mr. Blackman.
I'm, I'm ready to go.
All right. Dr. Prince.
I'd like to ask that the administrator and staff continue to look in ways that they can, within whatever limits we have, work on the appearance of that corridor from the Cogham Boulevard up to Marshall Street, the Lafayette Building, those overrun areas, and, and Jennings Street, at the railroad track, is where there's a, a large trap owned by some citizen, and it's, you know, it's become a really serious eyesore. It used to have a nice fence around it, but now the fence is gone, and you can see all the trash and stuff that has accumulated over the years. Earlier, we was talking about the Greeton Maple Street area, too, because we do have that industrial park on Maple Street, so the surrounding area, with some houses that look, appear to be abandoned, need to be investigated. And, of course, please continue to look for a quick remedy for the shade of, of the covering for the bookmobile. That's quite expensive and beautiful piece of equipment, and that type of graphic art's very sensitive to the elements. So, whatever county can do to remedy that, I'd like to look forward on that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Prince. Ms. Galadon.
Yeah, y'all know, now that I'm going to do a thank you thing, I'm looking out of shaft over there, he got three of his officers with him, and we have never seen that before, and that's real good. I mean, you got four members from your, your department that's in here. This is just February. Y'all guys been making some changes in your department, I've been hearing about, and they've been positive, and that, that's real good, that means a lot. There's a lot of people looking at your department, and y'all really stepping up, and truly appreciate that. Josh over there in the corner, working the job that you're doing with the city, and I think I mentioned this here before, is terrific, and they truly appreciate, and I know it's a lot, lot, lot of work on you, but you're doing a real good job on that, man, and you deserve that, that praise. Ms. Harris, what you're doing with the veterans' office, nobody have ever done before in Marlboro County. I mean, I don't know how many people recognize that, but you do a real good job here, right? Ms. Ashlyn, you, you keep us on the ball with our money, you keep our money straight, and that's ideal. Ron, just been in here two months, he looking up, wow, what happened? He been real busy. I mean, he been traveling around, he not just sitting in the office, he been traveling, and he's really been working hard and bringing a lot of information to us, and, and changing some programs around it, with some things done. That's like really, really important, so. I may have been mentioning Patricia, because she always say, don't mention my name, you know, but she keeps it straight, and I like that. Jason said earlier about, we have a couple of people that's in the hospital and praying for him. He's here tonight, but his mother is in the hospital, so instead of being in the hospital, he's sitting here. That means a lot, showing that he's a chairman, right? That's going to do everything that he can do to be here, to make sure that the county does what we're supposed to do. That's extremely important. So, just the second year, second month of this year, there's a lot of things been going on in the county, and fortunately, we have a good crew, and we on top of it, and that I truly appreciate.
Thank you, Ms. Galadon. Ms. Midgley.
I just want to have my name added, it would. I don't have it.
All right.
Um, Chair, good to have your staff coming, you said last year that you would be coming.
Yes, sir.
And, um, thank you, and I tell you, we're here to help, to assist, and when we can, um, other agents, Nikki and Amy, um, dog catch.
Dog catch.
But, um, you know, um, we do, we do appreciate, um, I think we did a tough effort, basically. And, uh, on recreation level, the basketball season is winding down, it's probably about another week, or actually a week. Um, one question that I don't quite understand here, maybe, um, Mr. Mullin can find, because we have the Jim and Lemon, that own, that own by account, a lot of games, if you play the benefit, that purpose of getting the, the county with a little gym, and turning in, put a lot of time and money in, you know, um, once the county know that it's a basketball gym, and this is our own facility, you know, we got it there for a purpose, you know, not for one or another, but, you know, let's use it more and more, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't spend the money for, that's what we got. And also can keep the school from, off our backs, it was a thing, you know. If we own it, and we use it, our facility, and if something happened, it's on us, and then that would mean I go back to school, we start to do messed up, we gotta buy this door, and, you know, it, it's a lot of headaches that come behind recreation when we use so many facilities, so. Um, I don't know, you know, what, what happens on a model, I think something that we could take care of by. Um, I don't know, but, you know, what, what happened on the line, or, I think something that we could take care of by next year, right? How about your prick?
All right, same here. Ready, or station, still play?
Your prick will live.
All right. All right. So, and, uh, but as everybody said, we do, we do appreciate everybody for coming out, uh, the sheriff, uh, you know, and, uh, Josh, and, you know, Ms. Mizzou and Vicky. Well, we could go on and on, and, you know, but we, we do thank you, and it's, uh, whenever we're setting up here doing, uh, what we have to do and look at and see y'all taking interest and coming here and supporting us, and we supporting y'all, I mean, that's what, that's what it is, you know, uh, is, is we know we turn on the TV, there's a great divide in United States of America. The one thing we do not want is a divide in Marlboro County, you know, but if everybody out there and everybody up here stays together, uh, you know, there, nobody can divide us, you know, you know, we, we keep this, um, Mr. Plato mentioned so many times, we keeping good Lord in front of us, you know, we all stay together, yeah, we'll disagree, but if we can do it civilly and, uh, agree to move forward, uh, you know, there's, uh, there's no better place to be than here in Marlboro County, you know, uh, we have a few little issues, as, uh, you know, as Dr. Prince has said many times, you know, our, our quarter around there, and you know, and, uh, if, if we can, whatever we can do, uh, you know, in any way we can, you know, if we can do anything there, I think it'd be greatly appreciated. It may take us a brainstorming session just to come up with some ideas, to figure out something, and, uh, you know, we got Mr. Mullin there, he's got a great head on him to, uh, to kind of come up with some ideas of what we can do, uh, you know, and, uh, so, but we do think, we, we are, we are happy, and, uh, we're, we're glad that we could able, uh, to work with, uh, N E T C, you know, and make the, the effort tonight to, uh, you know, work with them in action by council, it's, it's positive that, you know, we have a commitment to the economic, you know, uh, movement of Marlboro County. We want to see things happen for our county and our citizens, so we're, we're grateful for that, and we're grateful for everybody working together, and, um, we're just continuing to pray for, uh, Mr. Odom is, he's, uh, still balancing illness, and we have a lot of them, and it seems like every day our, our email list go off of prayer, prayer, and prayer, so, you know, one thing we can do is pray for people, you know, we might not can do a lot, but we can pray for them, so, uh, you know, we, we're going to keep it here in Marlboro County, a lot of people, uh, don't want you to pray, but I think if we continue to pray, we'll continue to, to move things right forward, and to right, Mr. Woods. And so, and, uh, and it's, Mr., uh, we've heard earlier that there's still some people in the county that don't know about the, uh, I S O rating. A lot of people went from a nine to a five, so we want to make sure that people realize that, uh, that they have a better insurance rating, and, uh, I heard just this week, uh, there was a drop in eight hundred dollars for one household, so, uh, so we, so we're going to try to get that out, so that's, that's good news, you know, we, uh, council, uh, works hard to, uh, put things together and, uh, make it for our citizens, that's what, that's what we're here for. And so we want everybody to know that, that we're working hard, and we're going to continue to work hard, and so, and so we thank you. If nothing else, uh, it's not too long of a meeting. Anything else? Do we have a motion to adjourn? All right. All in favor?